This is the April 27th, 2023 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda today are the minutes from Tuesday, March 28th, and Thursday, April 13th meetings. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions on the minutes?
I just have one.
Yep.
I was not at the last meeting. Can I just be removed from that list?
Yes.
Oh, I had you on there.
Yeah.
You can be removed from the list.
Well, you did walk in at the tail end.
I walked in. I walked in right after. She said this meeting is adjourned.
Right, right.
So maybe I'll...
I just copied everything from yours.
I'm sure, that's what I do too.
No problem, yes.
I'll just be classing her out now.
That's a good thing.
Thank you. But I remember you weren't there, yes. I'm sorry about that.
Not a problem.
I'll make sure that update is added.
I don't do as well as you do.
Can we have a motion?
Motion to correct the minutes of the April 13th meeting.
And accept both of them?
Second.
A second?
Well, we need the motion.
First, you let the motion finish.
Yeah, I think it's a motion for both with accepting with the correction.
And accept the minutes of the March 28th meeting.
Nice second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, the next order of business is the budgets. So you have the budget report to date, really literally to the minute, basically. We're 83% spent out total, and with just about two months to go, I think we're in a really good place budget-wise. I'm going to do my best to spend out operating in the next couple of weeks, making sure to leave funds for the final water bill, the phone bills, and Eversource. There will be three Eversource bills still this month. You're going to pay 13 Eversource bills this fiscal year, because last July, finance questioned why we were paying June's Eversource bill, which we received a statement for in July. Why we were paying that is an FY23 expense. None of the other town departments are doing that. That's how we've been doing it the whole time I've been here, so I just followed suit with how it was always done. But the interim accountant had caught that, and it raises a red flag if the town were to be audited, you know. So you'll pay 13 this fiscal year, and there's plenty of money in the budget to do that, because our Eversource, we had budgeted more money in that line this fiscal year, and our Eversource bills weren't all that much higher than last year. So there is money to do it, and there will be just like that adjusting period of 13 this year, and then it will go back to 12. So this won't be a problem going forward, and it will get us on the same page, so to speak, as the rest of the town. So that's great. And then otherwise, you know, between those three bills, the few phone bills we'll have, and the one water bill, and then a little bit more, I'll spend me possibly a little bit more on the materials line out of operating, and it would be as close to 100% as possible, which is good. One note I did want to make, because I have overspent a few of the lines, you'll see, one of them is building and grounds, which, that is overspent unexpectedly. We had a plumber come. You might remember, we talked about it, I believe, at the last meeting, because we were having an issue with a couple of the sinks in the staff restroom. So he came for this minor fix, but he pointed out that the restroom wasn't ADA compliant because we didn't have pipe and valve covers under every sink, and a public building needs to have pipe and valve covers to be ADA compliant, because you could have somebody who doesn't have feeling in their legs, who's up at the sink, and their leg touches a hot pipe, and they could burn themselves without knowing. So that is a requirement that we were unaware of. I went straight to the town administrator as soon as the plumber left. Turned out, there was a couple of other areas in town where we also didn't have this, so we needed to get six pipe and valve covers, for three in the staff restroom and three in the public restroom. So it's taken care of. The town ordered them for us. We paid for them, and then the town maintenance crew came to install them. So it's all set, it's all taken care of. But that is why we've overspent from building and grounds, because it was a $264 expense that was not anticipated, so. But other than that, I mean, we've clearly spent over the materials line, but that was planned, because we had underspent in the sales line. There isn't a lot of travel still that's happening. As I've told you before, like, most of the meetings I'm attending are still by Zoom, so I haven't been doing mileage reimbursement, I haven't gone to any conferences. So that's why there's so much leftover in the travel, but then that can be spent elsewhere within operating, which is what I've been doing. So I think that, yeah, that's it for the budget. So unless you have any questions, I think we're good for, I mean, this is the traditional place, you know, where we're at at this time of year, so that's good news. Anybody have any questions? Need a motion?
Motion to accept the budget as just presented?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to new business. A proposal for a five-week reduction in Saturday service hours to accommodate staff shortage. Okay, so, one of the big things I've been working on, the schedule is normally a puzzle regardless. But I've been trying to make the best out of a tough situation, and there's no denying that this is a tough situation. We've already been down that 19-hour position, as you know, the children's room assistant, and you're temporarily losing a 35-hour-a-week position that frequently goes over 35 hours to cover, so that you don't have to close the building. So, a couple of things to keep in mind before I explain why I've gone this route. We've got to have two people in the building at all times for safety, so that's key, that we can't just have one person here. Staff members have requests for time off that have to be honored in the interim of this shortage. And we also have regulations and standards for the state aid program that need to be followed. They have to be open 40 hours a week. That has to be over the course of five days, and there have to be some evening hours. So right now, we're open 45 hours a week, six days a week. So this, and we're open four evenings. So, you know, we meet our standards like above and beyond, so to speak. So in looking at this repeatedly, and trying to figure out what to do that would make the most sense for consistency for not only the staff, but for the public, because they're equal in this, the solution is to close for five Saturdays, which would be May 20th, May 27th, June 3rd, June 10th, and June 17th. Having to close it all is certainly not ideal, but with a 44-hour reduction in personnel, when you combine the director position and the children's room assistant position, it's really the only option. And it keeps us to just one day of closing per week, which provides that consistency, and it still allows us to meet the requirements of the state aid program. We can extend due dates and hold pickups to accommodate this, so nothing will fall due on those dates. When the automatic renewals happen, they won't fall due on those dates. Hold pickups won't expire on those dates, so that will hopefully have a minimal impact for patrons. The book drop will remain unlocked per usual. That's always unlocked 24/7, so it will stay unlocked. Online services are available 24/7, so none of that will change. And it's an important time, I think, to remind people too, that we're a fund-free library, so if they, they can only make it here on Saturdays, and they can't make it to another library, a neighboring library, which we have plenty of in this area, but if they absolutely cannot, they are not going to be financially penalized by returning an item late. So it's an important opportunity to remind people of that. This is the draft of what we would distribute to the public, if you'd like to take a look at it. If you approve what we're doing, this can be posted as early as tomorrow in the library, on our website, on social media. We'll include it in the main newsletter, which is scheduled to go out on Monday. It may not go out until Tuesday, because we're just, we've got a lot of balls in the air here. But hopefully, it'll be out for Monday. And we'll also need to share the information with Town Hall in a memo to the Board of Selectmen as soon as possible. But we will get this out. It gives patrons an almost month's notice that this is coming, so to prepare. And on the notice, you know, we're encouraging people to visit us Monday through Friday, when the hours won't change, so they won't be surprised. You know, they won't show up here one day, "Oh, I thought they were open till 7:30", you know, on Thursday nights, but, oh, they're closed. I mean, that unfortunately could happen if you have a sick call and you don't have a way of getting someone to stay. So we can't say it won't happen at all, but we anticipate we'll be open Monday through Friday, no problem. And we have lots of neighboring libraries that are open on Saturdays. For Haven, Wilkes, and New Bedford, all, I mean, all of the New Bedford branches, I believe, are open on Saturdays. Matt Poizett, Marion, Rochester, Lakeville, they all have Saturday hours. So it is certainly an inconvenience, and I think it's important to recognize that, yes, this could be a potential inconvenience, but it's temporary, and it only impacts five days of service, and it will have no impact on state, which I think is really important, that we're not doing something that could mess with that. So I'm certainly open to other suggestions, or if you want me to go back and relook at everything, I will. But we're trying to patch a lot of Band-Aids to make this work. And, you know, who knows, if by some miraculous chance something changes, then you could, you know, "Oh, surprise, we're open today after all. We didn't think we were going to be, but we are." I mean, that could happen.
If we had a replacement figure before this five weeks, once we get your body replaced, we would be able to cover Saturdays.
As long as staff were then able to go back to the Saturdays where they were scheduled to work. I mean, if people then make plans, because, "Oh, I didn't think I had to work", right, because...
But count-wise, we have enough bodies to do it.
Count-wise, yes, yeah, because we're doing it right now. You know, I mean, that's, I've picked up a few, I usually work one Saturday a month, but I've picked up an extra, you know, covering extra hours here, or coming in just for a few hours to help out on Saturdays. But for the most part, yeah, as long as, if you had the 35-hour position, I mean, if you had the 19-hour position even, you'd have enough to make it work. Enough bodies, it's needing the body.
Yep.
And like I said, certainly, if staff were available to swap back, you know, they understand that this is a temporary thing that we're doing to just fix a no-win situation in the interim, you know, in terms of staff scheduling. But certainly, if they were available, I'm sure they'd switch back. And I also, I do want to point out, so if they're not working on Saturday, then they can do a weekday shift, which allows us to remain open. I didn't say that part, but, but if, most people work six hour, not most, but some of them, they work between four and six hours on Saturdays. So that six-hour shift on Saturday gets...
Goes someplace.
Goes someplace else, so that the Monday through Friday is not impacted. And I'm sorry for not clarifying that. But that's also the one day where we're able to do that, because everybody works, except for my position and one other position. Every position works two Saturdays a month. So by doing this, whereas, you know, my position's the only constant on Fridays, and it rotates off where two or three other staff members also work Fridays. But everybody does the Saturdays, so it allows us to fill in the gaps on the weekday. And as long as everyone stays healthy, then the Monday through Friday hours will not be impacted. And we were going through the, what Monday through Friday would look like in this interim. We were going through it, all of us, with a fine-tooth comb, making sure there are no gaps, or can someone stay 15 minutes extra here and leave 15 minutes early there to try to patch it all together, so that we also don't put people too far over their hours, because most of them are not looking to work additional hours. So.
My only question is, why, why are we stopping at the 17th? Why didn't it go farther, or why, why is it five Saturdays and not...
So the reason why we're stopping at the 17th, because also, as I mentioned, we have to accommodate those time-off requests.
Right.
Time-off requests stop by that weekend. So after that weekend...
You should have enough.
We're not missing people throughout the following two weeks, except in the tail end, but it's already been filled. Like, the last two days of the fiscal year, the Thursday, Friday of the fiscal year, someone is on vacation those two days. But the other days within that period, nobody's using tech. So we're still able to keep the Monday through Friday, and then have the Saturday, because nobody's out. So again, as long as nobody calls out. I had thought for a little while that we could do just four, and open on that 6:3, and then we had to do some rearranging of time-off requests, and that didn't, we couldn't maintain that original thought that I had, which was just to do four. So that's, that's, so hopefully, it stays this way. I mean, this is the intention, this is staff's intention. This is the intention that I'm putting forth when, you know, when we're working on this schedule. So as long as everything stays the way that we're expecting it to stay, and with any luck, you know, you'll have these positions filled, and this will not be a problem beyond these dates, you know, or going into July, but it's not a problem for the 24th or 1st of July.
Sounds good. I'm sure you put a lot of time into it.
Right.
It's been a lot of... If this is what you came up with, at some point, let's look at it.
That's what I think too. The schedule is a mess to begin with, like, just China with time-off requests. And when, you know, everyone's here, it's great, it's no problem at all, but the puzzle becomes very complicated when, and then you factor in, "Oh, I need to leave an hour early this day, I need to swap a shift with somebody here." So when you start factoring all that in, which is why I've, you know, I've given drafts to every staff member to look at, to confirm, so that they would, could confirm, if we ask you to do this, if the board approves this, can you work this date that I'm asking you to work instead of the Saturday? And everybody's been, we have a good, a good team here, so everybody's been great about, and also being willing to do whatever they can to help out, so.
The time of year when people are using a vacation plan.
Correct.
You don't want to lose it.
Correct, right. We don't want anyone to have any impact on that, so. So as this stands, that won't impact anything in terms of that either. Everyone gets their time. So if you're okay with it, you will need to make a motion to approve the temporary reduction in service hours.
I make a motion to approve the temporary reduction in service hours.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you all very much. I would just like to note that even during COVID, we didn't have to do a reduction in service hours. I mean, this is like a last resort, there's no other way to do it. I did ask about getting temporary, like, someone to come in temporarily. And we cannot do that, because the tech positions are union positions, so that can't, you can't have somebody come in on a temporary basis, so.
You've been walking such a fine line anyway.
Right, right, right. Thank you, I appreciate that, and my email doesn't change, so any patrons who are upset about it, who have my email can reach out. I'll be, I'll be happy to take the bullet on this one as much as I can. There's so much you can do. Okay, moving on to the next topic, a recent donation from the Acushnet Lions Club? Yeah, so this is great. Ray St. Pierre, no relation, of the Acushnet Lions, reached out to me a few months ago to inquire about making a donation in support of the Summer Concert Series. The concert, word of the Concert Series is out there, for sure, in the community, as we already knew, but this really just confirmed. You know, he initially had asked how much the shows are, and what it would take to impact our Summer Concert Series. So we were very happy when he stopped by with a check for $1,000 from the Acushnet Lions. The board should accept the donation to make it official, that you'll accept the donation of $1,000 for the Summer Concert Series. It will fund two of the eight summer concerts, which is great. So we're very appreciative and thankful to the Acushnet Lions for this.
So I make a motion that we accept the $1,000 contribution from the Acushnet Lions to help fund the Summer Concert Series.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On behalf of the board, thank you, Ray, for the contribution. It is greatly appreciated, and many, many people will enjoy those summer concerts. Thank you. And next is the, an update from the Library Director's Search Committee. I have that. We are currently going through resumes that were submitted at this time, and we are scheduling interviews in the near future. That's all I have about that. And we have the Director's Report. Yes, you have my report. A lot of them, as usual, with that big paragraph of those Saturday hours. Let me see what else I wanted to mention. We did just place an order with Midwest Tapes for DVDs. I think, you know, we've been having serious delay issues with our main vendor for DVDs. The Friends ended up stepping in and purchased, made our first DVD order in months back at the beginning of the year, which was great. And DVD usage had dropped, but we are seeing it rise again, so we want to make sure we're getting the newest movies to have in the collection, of course. So I attended a website training with Midwest Tapes. Wasn't just a website training, it was also to understand their ordering process, how long it takes to receive items once you place an order. For new releases, how long it takes to receive them. So we reviewed some options, and I placed an order with them on April 21st. So we'll be getting, I forget how many we ordered, but we have a nice, over the next two months, array of movies arriving through them. We already deal with Midwest, because they're the vendor that supplies Hoopla, which is one of our online tools, so that worked out well. I've been very busy, as you can imagine, preparing documents for the next director. I am going through files, making sure that those are all in order, and that the file, what's in the file matches what I'm putting into the Google Doc. And I will make sure before my last day that I've shared those docs with Jen and with Sandra, so that a staff member and a trustee have those documents. And of course, if for some reason you can't access them, I will certainly help you access the information after I'm not here anymore. Kimmy, who is a degreed librarian, by the way, attended a training webinar with Sales Cataloging this week. She has been doing our magazine cataloging for over a year. She offered to help out in any way she could with cataloging, so Sales agreed to give her the training on that. Sales has to, with the staff, myself or Sandra can't train another staff member, it has to come through Sales. So they set that up real quick for us, and now she's able to assist Sandra with cataloging, particularly children's items, and that is going to be super helpful to Sandra, especially in the transition period coming up. So that'll be great. And we're psyched that Kimmy was more than willing, when it falls within her job description as well, so we're not having her do anything out of class. We got our public PC back that was converted to be a Sales Catalog only. I think patrons have responded really well to this, and they're happy to have a catalog back. It's also helpful to us, if a patron doesn't know their PIN number, we can't see their PIN number anymore, but we can direct them to the site, where they can have an email sent to them, and then can reset the PIN, so that's great, because the computer's on and ready to go for them to do that. We don't have to have them log in and give them a guest pass to get online, that kind of thing. When George from Sales was here to bring the PC back, he recommended that I upgrade the public PCs to Windows 11. They had asked us to hold off on doing that until they tested out a few things, particularly DeepFreeze, which is the software we use, so that people's documents don't stay on the computer, people can't download anything to the computer, malicious or otherwise. So they wanted to make sure that everything went smoothly with that before we started doing the upgrade. He recommended doing it as soon as possible, so I've done it on one computer, and I'll finish tomorrow. Unfortunately, our staff PCs are too old to be upgraded to Windows 11, so George recommended that we consider in the near future, within like the next calendar year, most likely, getting new staff PCs. And, you know, it's probably time, that's something I would have been talking to you about next year anyway, because we are starting to see their age a little bit. So you have plenty of money in the stock gift account. I mean, you can purchase these PCs however you want, but I would have been asking you to use the gift account to fund PCs, the stock gift accounts for the new library, so there are funds there to do that. You would be getting them through Sales, and I'll certainly make sure this is in my notes to the next director, that this is something they should be considering as soon as you all think it's possible to do. We've been doing that Sales road trip, the library road trip. We've had people come in from Berkeley, Easton, and Pembroke. Today, we had two women from, two women from C-CONC come in with an almost full map of stamps from, so they've been to almost every library.
Like the grannies on the road.
We, Sandra took a photo of it, we've been trying to do that with people's maps, so she took a photo of it and printed it out and hung it on the barn door so that people can see. We've heard from a lot of people that they hope this is something Sales does in the summer, and I have no idea of knowing, this was a committee, it wasn't actually Sales itself, it was a committee of librarians from within the network who heard that this happened at another network and wanted to do it here. So, you know, if a committee wanted to take something like that on for the summertime, sure, but we're going to just encourage patrons to take a map anyway, and if you do it in the summer, you do it in the summer, great. Like, it doesn't have to be official, like, you just do it.
No stamps, but they'll still go.
Right, but, well, we all have the stamps, so if, as long as a staff member at the library is willing to stamp it, but who wouldn't be, then they should be far a little checkmark or a happy face or something to acknowledge that they were there.
Exactly.
So hopefully, that's something that happens again, or it just continues, because people do really seem to like it. We had the Toe Jam Variety Show last Friday in support of this. The Friends funded that, we had 172 people here. We were not expecting that, and we've had Toe Jam in the past, we have not gotten that to kind of turn out. But it was a beautiful day, last Friday of school vacation. We had done a lot of promotion for it, it was being held outdoors. So it was like a summer concert night, it was packed. It was exciting to see. We do have the Saturday at noon time, Hot Club Cheese Roll, a trio of musicians who were here in the summer last year, and they're coming back. That's also funded by the Friends. Weather permitting, we will be outside under the pavilion, but the forecast for Saturday isn't looking so hot, so we'll have to figure out, depending on the crowd size, if we're holding it in this room or just in the main area of the library. And so if you're planning on looking for a quiet spot on Saturday and it's raining, we probably won't be the quiet spot that you need. So the Friends funded these programs. They also purchased two gift cards to Roseland Nursery in the amount of $50 each. And we've had people who were attending these programs fill out a ticket, and they're entered into the raffle to win. We'll do it at the Hot Club Cheese Roll Show on Saturday, and at the end of the show, we will pull two winners. And so the Friends, you know, we really appreciate, they gave us $1,000 for road trip programs, and we, we really appreciate that they could step up on short notice and do that for us, which is great. Backing up a little bit, Summer Concert Series is fully booked, eight weeks of concerts, ready to go, funded by a grant from the Acushnet Cultural Council that we had applied for last year. The Acushnet Road Race Committee, you accepted their donation back in November. That was for $3,000, so that's covering concerts and more. And then the Acushnet Lions Club donation that you accepted today. So, which is, which is wonderful. And we're going to continue with the traditional summer reading program with the beads and the prize cart. The staff are all on board to do that. Also, if your new children's librarian starts in the summer, which is very optimistic, or I think are very realistic, it's not just optimistic, it's a very realistic thing, they won't be walking into a program that's a ton of bells and whistles that they didn't have anything to do with the creation of. So this summer will be definitely a little more low-key than what people have been used to over the past few, well, not necessarily the past few years, because we had two summers where we didn't do anything because of COVID. So it's kind of like, we gave you a little last year, and now this year, we're not doing as much. So, so it's, it's kind of like, we gave you a little last year, and now this year, we're not doing as much. There will be things, it just won't be as much. But the Friends are looking to fund some programs. They met last night, and they're looking to fund some programs for the fall, winter, and spring, that they wouldn't normally have the money for, but they will, because we're not doing as much this summer. So a lot of opportunity here for some good things to come beyond summer. And other than that, unless you noticed anything you want to ask me about, I think that's all from the report. Oh, and then the statistics, which go in the report, sorry. We're, we're just doing, doing really well, holding steady in some areas. But then, you know, going back up from last year in other areas. So we're happy to see that it's funny, because this, this year does not, this month, March, the month of March, does not reflect that increase in DVDs that I talked about, which is interesting. But it's there, I swear. If we go back a little bit, we could see it's there. So, yeah, that's, that's it.
Great.
All right, anybody have any other questions, or anything to add? Okay. And we already have our next meeting. It is going to be on Monday, May eighth, at four-thirty. That's still good for everyone?
It is.
Fantastic. And does anybody else have anything else to add? Then we need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.